Hey, everybody. My name is Kristin Ferguson, Chair of the Planning Board. We are going to start our September 22nd, 2020, meeting at 7:00. Can I take roll call first, or I need to open the public hearing?
No, roll call.
All right, well, let's say hi to all of our members. Mr. Sayah, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Ms. McEnany?
Hi, I'm here.
Mr. Flint?
Hello.
And Ms. Orbital?
Hello.
And Mr. Bazet? All right. So now, we have a few things on our agenda, not too much. We're going to start with the public hearing for the subdivision. I'll open that up. Then we've got a couple of nominations kind of coming up that we want to meet some folks. And then we will basically kind of talk and do some planning before we open it up to public comment. So, in accordance with provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81T, and the Town of Concord subdivision rules and regulations to review the definitive subdivision plan, application of signs, development, and permitting LLC for 16 lot subdivision of land at 11B, 146B, and 1442 Main Street, and 110 Highland Street. So we're going to open that public hearing. And we were informed that the applicant was not able to get together all of the information requested by the board and town staff. And the applicant has requested a continuance without discussion to our next meeting, which is October 6. So I would entertain a motion to continue this item till our October 6 meeting at 7:30, if anyone would like to make such a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue the item until our October 7 meeting?
6.
6, excuse me, thank you.
At 7:30, does that time work?
7:30.
Is there a second?
I can be here.
A second.
Okay, Mr. Sayah, are you in favor?
Yes.
Ms. Orbital?
Yes.
Mr. Bazet?
Yes.
Ms. McEnany?
Yeah.
Mr. Flint?
Yes.
And this is Ms. Ferguson, yes. So, does the applicant have a deadline to get you materials to make it onto the October 6 meeting?
Yes, they would have to get stuff to me probably by the end of this week, or Monday at the latest.
Can we make sure that they have that deadline? Do you mind emailing them?
No, no.
I just, I don't want them to give it to you late, you know, too late to do anything with.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
And one question, Elizabeth, I know we've got to make our decision by, it was roughly October 15. Does that change in any respect since we're continuing? No, okay. So, then...
I'll be happy to send an email to the board, giving them update on the subdivision control law and the timelines. But since the board has continued this item without discussion...
Yes, thanks. That's artfully stated, thank you.
Okay, we have some business to discuss, but the first thing that we have, we have a couple of folks that are joining us tonight. We've got somebody who is being nominated, well, we'd like to nominate someone, have the select board nominate someone for the West Concord Advisory Committee. And that's Alan, is it Coder? Can you, would you mind unmuting Alan, and he can introduce himself, please?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Alan Coder. We've, my family and I moved to West Concord in 2016 from San Diego. So made a shift from the west coast to the east coast. We have a bit about myself, we have three kids, three boys. And for work, I work for CBRE, which is one of the largest, actually, real estate services provider in the world. And my focus, I work on a lot of development projects, but my background is in life science. I'm a scientist by training, turned real estate and operations. And so now we work on major life science development projects, both in Boston-Cambridge area, northeast focus, but also now in emerging markets across the US. So Pete DeRosa and I, he was one of the first guys I met when we moved here. And, you know, I just have an interest in West Concord. We're going to be here a while. And want to, you know, spend some time to give back to the community and participate. And so thought this would be a good way to do that.
Well, that's great, thank you. Could I ask if anybody on the board has any questions or comments, or wants to say hello to Alan?
Sounds like it would be a good perspective on the WECAC, as they call it.
Thanks, Alan, thank you for stepping up and being willing to do this. Look forward to your input.
And I believe what we would do, do we need to have a, like, formally nominate him? What's the process? So we would need someone to say, we'd like to have the select board nominate Alan.
Someone would move that the Planning Board recommend to the select board that Alan be appointed to the West Concord Advisory Committee.
I move, I so move that the Planning Board nominate Alan Coder.
Recommend?
No, 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 let me just, guys, just let me try.
Can we just have a teleprompter?
I move that the Planning Board recommend to the select board that the select board nominates Alan Coder to the West Concord Advisory Board.
The select board would appoint Alan to the West Concord.
We nominate to the select board that they appoint Alan to the West Concord Advisory Board.
Committee.
I'm afraid, Alan, you're never going to make it at this rate.
Burton, just do it, okay, Burton, just do it.
Kate, I'm going to be in your shoes, I'm 100% sure, so.
I think he got it.
Is there a second?
A second.
Helen, second, okay. Ms. Orbital?
Yes.
Mr. Flint?
Yes.
Mr. Bazet?
Yes.
Ms. McEnany?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
And this is Ms. Ferguson, yes. So we, you will, I think, hear about the next steps. And thanks for joining them, and we'll look forward to hearing your recommendations along with the rest of the committee.
Awesome, thank you so much.
You are certainly welcome to stay, but you can be excused, this is a quiet meeting as well.
Awesome, well, I will excuse myself because I have work to do tonight, unfortunately. Thank you again, and look forward to seeing you all again soon.
Thank you. We've got another person on the line tonight that we would like her to introduce herself. Linda Miller is also, she is our prospective new member of the Planning Board. And so we'll give her a chance to introduce herself. And then our plan is to have the select board nominate her and go through that process as well. But, so Linda, if you can, I don't know, if you can unmute yourself, or if Elizabeth can unmute you, we'd love to hear from you. Hold on, you're still muted.
There you go.
Yes, I'm Linda Miller. We have lived in Concord for over 20 years. And my background is more in economics and finance and investments, professionally and educationally. In terms of Concord, I've served on the Parents Association and the, both the high school and the middle school. Then I was also on the Concord Finance Committee as a member and chair. And then most recently, we just completed the Affordable Housing Advisory Trust Fund Committee, where the trust fund was recommended to the town and approved at town meeting. And so my responsibilities there will be over. And so I have looked around, and I'm very excited about, perhaps hoping that you will support me to join the Planning Board, probably bring a slightly different set of skills, but look forward to a long and rewarding learning curve.
Thanks, Linda, it's nice to meet you visually. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Linda while she's here? And I think the plan would be that I think you might be able to join us on our October 6 meeting. I think that the schedules might work, I can't remember if it's one after that.
So, the Planning Board would make a recommendation that the select board appoint Linda to the Planning Board. For the select board to appoint anyone to a committee, at one meeting, they nominate, and at the next meeting, they appoint.
Yeah, so I didn't know if there's two meetings before October 6, but we will find out.
I will be available on the 6th, and...
You'll want to listen in anyway.
I will listen in mostly, in either case.
Well, oh, good, so is there a motion to recommend?
I would like to, I would like to just give another try, can I, Burton?
Please.
Okay.
Yeah.
I move that the Planning Board recommends to the select board the nomination of Linda Miller to the Planning Board, to sit on the Planning Board, to be there by appointed. What do you think, Burton?
I think you got it, I'm going to second that.
You're going to second it, all right.
Great, all in favor, Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. Bazet?
Yes.
Ms. Orbital?
Yes.
Mr. Flint?
Yes.
And Ms. McEnany?
Yes.
And this is Kristin Ferguson, yes. So thanks, Linda, you will be advised of kind of the next steps, and we will look forward to you joining this soon, yes, Elizabeth?
So we will send that, I will send that recommendation email to the town manager and the select board chair. And it actually, they have a meeting on next Monday, the 28th, and then another meeting, October 5th. So, yes, it is possible.
You're in.
After, after the select board nominates and then appoints, you will receive your appointment papers. It'll take, since it's the day after, it'll take a little coordination because you have to go and see the town clerk to be sworn in, which I'm sure you remember from the last two committees. But, so it'll take a little bit of coordination, but I think we can do it.
All right.
Into a great meeting.
Elizabeth, is that for a full term, Linda's full term? Five years. Excellent.
Yes.
Great, it's exciting, babe, good to meet you, Linda, and we all look forward to having you join our wonderful team.
Just thank you for volunteering.
Yeah.
Originally, when I invited her to this meeting, I thought it was going to be more lively. So I'm sorry that it will be at your next meeting that you'll see some more excitement.
I'm scared.
I know, all right. And you too, you're welcome to stay, or we are going to kind of discuss our plans for the year, so you're welcome to listen to that. Now, the only other thing for us to talk about really tonight is, you know, our plans for town meeting 2021. And actually, before we do that, I did want to say a big thank you to Elizabeth, and to Nancy, and to Marcia. You guys did so much to get ready for that meeting, and there was a lot of things that happened right up until the end, like practically hours before that started. So with, you know, changes in slight wording, and making sure everything was done. And so we really appreciate all your work, thank you very much. It was an unusual meeting, and a lot, seemed like a lot more work went into it, especially being contracted like that. So thank you. I think it was great, and thanks for all the board members who were there, and on the nice day. And I think it went about as well as we can imagine, or we could have hoped for. And so, yeah, so now it's already time to think about town meeting 2021. And we were looking at it in terms of timing. And as you saw on the, on our memo from Elizabeth, we don't know if the timing has changed at all for planned meeting, or for town meeting. But when I went to the chair breakfast last week, the word on the street was that it's possible that they might hold town meeting in June of 2021, as opposed to April, in case it has to be outdoors again. I don't know when that decision is going to be made, so I think we still have to proceed, you know, as if we have the same deadlines, which would be our, I think, our January warrant, I think that's even included, so. Any questions, or does anybody have any other information about town meeting 2021? All right, so then, so that leaves us, so normally what we would do is we'd have to have everything in by January 4, which means we've got our, you know, three months or so to develop any warrant articles that we're going to submit, and, you know, hold any public hearings to get comment and things like that. So, right now, we have the two-family dwelling bylaw that's already drafted and ready to go, it's in the hopper. And so we have to kind of decide, make sure that one's ready to go. And then are there any other ones we want to develop in the next three months, and get input on, and put on the warrant? So, we can, you know, look at that actionable items, we can look at our goals. And Elizabeth, I know you have that, the goals page that we worked on, if you want to put that up. But let me open it up to the board. Have you guys have been thinking about any bylaws that we didn't get to do this year, or previous years, besides the two-family, that you think we should start thinking about now?
Where are we in the Thoreau Depot planning process? That would have been town meeting a year and a half from now, right? Is that, was that the glide path we're on?
That was my understanding, is that that was not slated for 2020.
No, definitely not 2020.
Or 2021, sorry.
I mean, definitely not even 20, annual town meeting 2021. You may be ready to go forward if there is a fall town meeting in 2021, but definitely not annual town meeting.
Okay, yeah, and that makes sense. It seems especially given our limitations and stuff over the next several months, it just doesn't seem feasible, okay.
But I did, you know, regarding that, I did have some questions and comments. So I think what we, I think we're going to be drafting, you know, bylaws and iterations of that with the help of MAPC over the course of, when is their contract through, Elizabeth? I forgot.
I'm pretty sure that they were able to extend things out for, you know, probably the next 10 months.
Oh, okay, okay, so that's not a limitation in terms. So they're going to help us draft that, but what I'm hoping that we do, and that's what I was mentioning kind of at the beginning, right when we started, was to really get property owners in that business district, their input on this, to make sure that we are drafting things that are, or we're getting their input as we're proposing those changes to the bylaws.
Yeah, Kristin, just to add on to that, to touch on the Starbucks property. It seems like what happened there is the community decided that the proposal, the proposal would make that property less safe. And I think one of the reasons that we didn't really know whether it would be or not is because they hadn't gotten to the point where they had applied for their permit, so they hadn't really developed their argument to really demonstrate that it was or was not. So I guess I'm just, in my mind, I'm wondering, and I guess this is up to the property owner, whether they will go ahead and actually develop some of that, if they want to try again for that, to go on the next warrant.
I mean, I don't, I don't think that the property owner can put in that one-way, that one-way drive, or propose to put that in anymore, since we didn't move the boundary.
Well, I guess I'm saying, if they, I guess I'm saying, I think that they didn't develop that material because they weren't at the position of doing a permit. But I guess I'm saying that it might be that they need to do that to get it.
Well, remember, that was our, it was our warrant article, not the property owner, so.
So I will be, I will be talking with the property owners about, you know, the issues and concerns that were raised, and discussing with them whether it, you know, they do want to move forward. I agree that if they do want to move forward, they're going to at least have to expend the time and the money to have a transportation engineer do that initial assessment.
Yeah.
And then that is, you know, that information can be provided to the board if, in another, you know, an additional discussion.
Yeah, okay.
Whether the board tries to move it forward again or not.
Okay, thanks. So they could still apply for a permit to put that drive in?
No.
Okay.
No, we're just, we're talking about what are the circumstances under which it would come back on the warrant, I think.
That we would try to amend the district boundaries, that would...
Yeah, so I'm wondering, if they came back for us, and they had all these materials to demonstrate it, that it would be an improvement, that would be a reason to try to move again? Sorry, I'm going backwards in this.
No, no, you're not, because that's what we're talking about, is if we need to prepare anything for this year. So I guess that could be a tentative one that we can put on there again.
Yeah, and I don't even know if it's tentative, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what it would look like if that was to happen.
You think that's unlikely to happen, Elizabeth is shaking her head, it's unlikely to happen before, in time for this shit.
That's, it's...
It would, I think it would be very unlikely for them to be able to hire a transportation engineer to do that kind of study. And then, because I think they would also have to work with the town and work with the engineering division, I don't know what information is already out there about that intersection pre-COVID. And, because it functions completely different right now. So, I think, I don't see that type of information happening in time.
Okay.
So that would be good, because then it would move it into when we think that we're going to do the rest of Thoreau, which was a very valid point that people had, in terms of wanting to see it together with the rest of the Thoreau Depot district. So that would work out, okay.
Great. But that's, I mean, I think that's a good, good point that we want to discuss. What about anything else? If you look at our goals for this year, obviously, the expiration of the Thoreau Business District is a big one. And that is going to be a multi-year project. And then, but other than that, in terms of bylaws, what did you see, Elizabeth?
Well, so I will, I will tell you, as far as item 3, the state is taking back the grant that we received for the shuttle. So that will not be happening, at least in the near future. So, then, the board did talk about neighborhood conservation districts, which I don't see that happening for, you know, town meeting, because it's a, it's a new idea, it's a new thought. I think there's too much, there's too much of a learning curve to be able to move that in that direction. Although, for an update, I can tell you that the Jenny Dugan neighborhood is working with the Historic Districts Commission about establishing a new historic district. So, that actually, that will be something on the town meeting warrant. And then, you know, whether there's something that the board can do, you know, have a conversation, maybe, not sure what the Board of Appeals' agenda looks like for October 8, but that may be something that the board can have a conversation with, or a couple of board members with the Board of Appeals about six-point, you know, the FAR bylaw and Section 7.1.5. And, you know, whether the board wants to think about the effectiveness of currently the FAR bylaw. From my perspective, it's not effective. It's, you know, there's been a couple of cases, you know, that have pushed up against the FAR. But for the most, for the most part, projects don't even come close. So that might be something that the board could do, and have that conversation with the Board of Appeals.
Elizabeth, do you think that might change if there was a two-family bylaw in place and residency? Or where smaller 10,000 square foot lot sizes, potentially, people trying to put bigger houses in denser areas?
So, yeah, you may, you may see, you may see projects pushing up against the FAR, specifically dealing with that, the two-family bylaw, if that should pass. And, and really, I think the FAR for Residence C Zone District, you know, it might be some minor tweaking. But the FAR for most of the lots in AA, and even a few in B, it's just, it's so much that, you know, it's, it's never going to be triggered.
Now that you said it, somebody's going to build 30,000 square foot house.
Well, we have, we have a couple 15 to 20s, so.
I do like the idea of, could we propose a joint meeting somehow? Or how can we do that to just have a discussion about that?
Yeah, I mean, it would just come down to finding a time where all of you are available for an additional meeting. It would be by Zoom, so it's, I mean, it's a little bit easier than, you know, all of you having to, you know, come into Kai's Road. But, so, we can, you know, I can send out, you know, I can send out a request, and they, maybe I'll send out a doodle poll with a bunch of different options. And it doesn't have to be at night either, so I don't know what everybody's availability is, you know, like, first thing in the morning.
Depends on how much screaming you want in the background.
Elizabeth, is it not effective because lots are so big? Or because the ratio just isn't, like, restrictive enough?
The ratio is not restrictive enough, because when you get into those districts, more of the lots are larger. I'm not saying there's, you know, going to be some neighborhoods where they got upzoned, you know, in the past, and they might be, you know, 20,000 square feet, but now they're in, you know, 40,000 square foot zone district. But for, for the most part, it's not effective. I mean, the Board of Appeals is still seeing special permits to, you know, for over 50%, that don't even come close to the FAR.
And I mean, I think this, a discussion like this would be in response to public comment with saying about mansionization, and what are we doing about that? And I think it's, I just think it's worth having a discussion about how we're, between the ZBA and our board, how we are trying to, you know, keep for that long-term vision.
So, but one, one other item, and it's minor. Davy Tree, the reviewing agents, did provide some very, you know, very minor feedback on the tree preservation rules and regs. There are just a couple clarifying things. But it would require that the Planning Board have a noticed public hearing to amend the rules and regs. But I think it may be worthwhile on a future meeting to have the Davy Tree reps come to a board meeting, and generally have a conversation about, you know, the effectiveness of, you know, what they feel of the effectiveness of the tree bylaw, whether there's parts of the actual bylaw that need to be amended, not just the rules and regs. And for over the next six months, have the Planning Board go through and kind of be in line to have the... go through and kind of be in line to have those updates ready to go. As part of town meeting, the budget that was passed, there, we will be hiring a land manager for the first time through Natural Resources. So that myself, the Division Manager for Natural Resources, the Building Commissioner and the Health Director, all of us pooled our resources in different areas to be able to assist funding the land manager position. And the land manager will be a certified arborist, will oversee all of the town-owned conservation land, and will also become the, the reviewing agent or, you know, the town's, you know, reviewing agent for the tree bylaw. So we won't need to have an outside consultant any longer. But I think Bill Stendrop and Liz McKinley from Davy Tree have been doing this for a year now. And I think they have a really good understanding of where things have worked and, you know, where they have failed completely. And, and they may be able to also provide their opinion on just the general effectiveness of the tree bylaw. You know, I'm, I'm not convinced that it has, in its current form, that it has really done, you know, very grand things. It, it has saved, you know, a few trees here and there, but as everybody can see, in other cases, it's, you know, I'm just not sure of its effectiveness.
Okay. All right, can you tee, I know somebody did come in, maybe in the spring, or maybe in the, in the early spring or the winter, and give us a minor update, right? About, are you able to tee something up for the October timeframe?
Elizabeth, do you think there's something practicable, implementable that we can do to save more trees?
I, I think it's a, I think it's a very difficult balance between, you know, people's rights to own their property and develop their property, you know, within the confines of the zoning bylaw as far as setbacks and, and those types of things. And you know, in, and because we're not sewored in all the places, you know, having to put in septic systems is, you know, it's just a reality. And so I, I, I think it's a very difficult, a difficult balance.
Thank you.
Sorry, Kristen, I didn't mean to interrupt there, you were, you were saying there's somebody teed up. I didn't interested you.
No, no, that's fine, she's, she's going to bring in somebody from Davy Tree on one of our meetings so that we can hear and that can inform how we might want to, if we want to make any amendments to the tree preservation bylaw.
Great.
Did anybody else hear anything or has been thinking anything in terms of other potential bylaws that we would try to bring to next year's town meeting?
I haven't really researched anything, but, you know, something I learned in looking at the PRD stuff last year was how Mass Audubon has been involved with, you know, certain, one, yeah, certain towns and helping them, you know, think, think about, you know, what more they can be doing, depending on their, their goals and sustainability goals especially. And I know, I don't think that event ever happened that they were co-hosting with one of the towns. I remember some folks were going to try to go, but that would have been like right when COVID happened. So, I don't know if Elizabeth, you remember what that was, was going to be hosted in, maybe Harvard or something like that, a town not too far away, and Audubon was going to be there. But anyways, I just was going to mention, like, it could be interesting in general to maybe have one of them come to one of our planning board meetings to just talk about what, what they're up to with other towns. Might not make it in time for this next town meeting, but just something that I've been wanting to hear more about what they're up to.
They're.
How they support, support other towns.
Their head of Conservation Science used to be the Chair of the WECAC, Jeff Collins. So he might be somebody that would want to be, come to the planning board, he's very familiar with what we do.
Yeah, just to piggyback on, on, you know, this idea, and Haley, I'm really glad that you brought it up, because I've been just thinking about how many letters we get from folks about projects that bring up the long-range plan and our sustainability goals. And I think that we have to follow our bylaw, you know, I think, well, what, what is our discretion? Where can we be impactful in terms of, in terms of making the long-range plan goals a reality? And I think there's some areas, you know, where we have discretion where we do do that. There's some areas where we have to follow up our process and we can't. But certainly, one of the things that we do do is, you know, propose amendments to our bylaw. So Haley, I think to your point, if we feel like we're doing something like that, we're bringing Mass Audubon in, or we're really thinking holistically as one of our, one of the potential areas that we have to be advocates for the long-range plan is in our role in proposing amendments. So I think that that would be a great step toward, toward doing that, towards being effective in that way. So I, I think that's great.
Elizabeth, you know, we might decide it's not right for Concord, whatever, like, but I just think it would be useful for us even as a planning board to hear.
Elizabeth, are you familiar with that kind of, the Mass Audubon support, you know, for towns and things like that in terms of sustainability?
I, I know of it, I'm not, I'm not, but I, I will, I will reach out to them. And I can also pull in the Sustainability Director.
Yeah, I don't know if she's still there, I had been speaking with somebody there who, who was pretty familiar with this. I know they've had some turnover and, and stuff since COVID happened, so I'm not, you know, totally up to speed on, you know, what that change looks like, but I'll, I'll shoot her a note as well, see if she's, you know, kind of quickly ID who the best person is.
Great.
Related to that, at the Chair Breakfast last week, the Climate Action Advisory Board, the representatives said that they are going to be advocating at the state level for, for net zero building code. You know, so that's, that's one thing, if I'm, if I'm quoting that correctly. So, you know, that's something that we always think about, and that, that it's really building code and, and stretch codes that's driving some of the things that we are, we're trying to influence. And then, that's from a sustainability perspective and kind of related to this and bylaw discussion, is the Historic Commission says they are proposing an amendment to the demolition delay bylaw to change their description of historically significant property. And if I, if my notes are correct, they would change it to be a, a building older than 50 years old. And then also the, the date at which that, that year starts the countdown. Whether it's, right now, I think the date starts at the date of the application rather than the date of the public hearing. So they said it's the, hopefully, these changes might mean fewer demolitions and that it's going to be the first change to this bylaw that they're proposing in, in many, many years. So those were two things related to kind of some of the things that come before us.
Kristen, the, the stretch code, can you, I, I slightly missed what you said. How does that relate to zoning?
Well, I, I think some of the things that we say, well, can't we do this, can't we do that? That Elizabeth reminds us, that's really in the, in the building code.
Yeah.
And so I, I think, you know, when we say, can't we require all, you know, all new development to be fossil fuel-free? And we just saw the AG strike that, you know, proposal down from, I think it was Brookline or something. So another way to attack this would be, you know, if the building code was requiring all new construction be net zero. And now I'm kind of really extrapolating, basically, all I heard was that one snippet is that they're going to be, you know, advocating for this state, across the state, net zero building code. And, and I, and I would imagine that's kind of a longer-term vision. So we, we wouldn't do anything different, I just want to kind of let you know that other, other people are doing things that hopefully will also propel us toward more sustainable development.
So, I would just, even though you may not have a lot of zoning bylaw amendments to put on the town meeting warrant, does not mean you will not be busy. So you, you don't need to, I mean, there may be a couple of housekeeping things, I haven't talked with the Building Commissioner yet or, and, or the Board of Appeals, when you have that conversation, there may be some housekeeping things that they want to, to look at. But you know, the last, you know, the last, you know, I'm going to say four or five months, at least from a town staff perspective, have been very challenging trying to get back to, you know, back to something that, you know, is somewhat normal. So, you know, we will be, you know, ramping back up on updating the subdivision rules and regs, which will require, you know, the planning board's input and, you know, public hearing. Starting to pull in different examples of site plan rules and, you know, regs, which the board currently doesn't have. And so, I mean, there's, there's going to be a lot of, you know, a lot of things going on. So I don't want you to think that you're not going to be busy just because you don't have a lot of zoning bylaw amendments on the warrant.
Well, and certainly we'll be busy with Thoreau Depot, it's just that's a long process.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think every other, you know, one meeting a month, you will, you know, Chris from MAPC will coming back and, you know, having a focused discussion on, you know, uses and, and then, you know, another meeting, a focused discussion on parking, and then another meeting, a focused discussion on, you know, another element that you talked about, you know, design guidelines. And so, you know, those, those will also, I mean, that's going to, you know, that's going to be a lot of, you know, a lot of work. So I don't want you to think that just because you don't have a bylaw, you know, bylaw amendments, that you're not going to be busy.
That's, that's good to know. Okay, I mean, I, we don't have to scrape up bylaw amendments if, if we don't have any, I think that's fine. I think we, we did quite a bit, you know, for, for this year's town meeting. And I, and I think they were, for the most part, well-received and are going to make a difference, so.
I've been thinking about the FAR, and Elizabeth, maybe you can, this is a question for you. Since you said hardly the FAR gets into, it never, it's not, it's not that effective, basically. Would it be, if we had the FAR, and just very hypothetically, if we had the FAR on a sliding scale, how restrictive it gets with this lot size? Because I think, I think one of the reasons the FAR is not effective, because their, Concord has so, lot sizes vary tremendously, and having a blanket FAR might not be that effective.
Yeah, I, I definitely think there should be, you know, you've had it for a few years now, and I definitely think there should be a discussion about each of the zone districts should have a different calculation. The same.
Something perhaps is a factor of the lot size. Because that, that makes a big difference, how large houses can get, because otherwise it's, it's, you cannot make a blanket FAR. Anyway, this is something that we might be able to have a discussion on.
And I think this year, if we did do some research, and we did also, you know, have a joint meeting with the ZBA and, and get a better handle on, on what they're seeing and some of the decisions they're making, I think that would inform us to kind of do more strategic thinking for possibly the, the following year. I mean, I don't know if we, if we'd be able to change something this year, but I, I like, it's on our list to, to actually research, so we have some, some facts. And I think that's it, that could certainly be something that we come out with is what would happen differently if we had a sliding scale. So thank you for bringing that up. Did anyone have any, anybody else have any comments or questions on our 2020, 2021 goals and projects? I, I will, at some point soon, refine the list from the envisioned Concord plan to narrow down some things so that we can look at that, you know, short and medium-term project, so we know what's on the horizon. Otherwise, Elizabeth, did you have anything else to add on our, on things that we should work on? So before, I think we have minutes to approve and public comment. Before we do those things, just to kind of like a preview of, of what's coming up in October, November, December, we've got, you know, the application for the subdivision is, is due back to us on October 6th, as we already talked about. And then we, Elizabeth, is there any other previews that you can give us so we know kind of what, what types of things might be coming up? We're going to try to get a joint meeting with the ZBA, so look for a doodle poll. We're going to try to get somebody from Davy Tree coming in, or we've got MAPC coming in to talk about Thoreau Depot, and that's at least a couple times. What else can we look forward to in, in this fall?
So for, on the, either the planning, for, on the planning board's current meeting documents, you'll see an additional definitive subdivision was submitted. This is a, it's, it's a laying out a new road. It's in Concord, but the access is through Sudbury, through the Quarry North Project. So that won't be coming up until the end of October, whatever the second meeting in October is. On your October 6th meeting is a two-unit PRD for Habitat for Humanity at 9:30 Main Street. Definitely not a difficult, a difficult PRD, so that'll be on that agenda. And then, I can't think of, I can't think of any other, you know, big projects that are coming down in the next few months.
When will we likely need to have another public, is it a public meeting where we invite public input about Thoreau Business District? I know we've done two already, but once we kind of get more towards the specific changes we're proposing?
So I think you'll have the public forum after the, the next series of three meetings with MAPC. So probably sometime maybe in March or, you know, February or March. But it'll be after those, that series of focused conversations with MAPC. There'll be another, you know, large forum again.
Right. I just wanted people to have an idea about kind of what was, what was coming up, so we knew what to expect and how we're going to fit in our other things like, so Elizabeth, I imagine you're going to keep feeding us things to react to, like rules and regs and, and site plan review and things like that. So thank you for keeping the work on that. Can, I'll, I'll open it up to public comment, and then we can do the, and then we can do the minutes as our, our last things. Is there any, any, any comments from the board first before we, and I don't see a lot of public, but. And are there any comments from the public? All right.
I'm sorry. Can I raise one, I'm sorry, let me, um.
Tell us your name and address, please. You just muted yourself, try again. You're still mute. See, we should, I should just let her talk. How about now?
There we go.
So Amy, try turning off your video and see if your audio comes back. So. So you might have to, you might have to jump off and, and come back in. So.
We, we will wait for you. That's all right.
No, no, I'm, I'm gonna.
We can, we can do our minutes and come right back to you.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I'm going to put you in the waiting room.
All right.
Bring her back.
Okay, any other, any other public comment? And we will, we'll come back to that. There were two sets of minutes. Is that correct? Yeah, two sets of draft minutes, August 19th and August 25th. Did anyone have any comments about the August 19th minutes?
Okay, so I would make a motion that we approve the August 19th planning board minutes as drafted.
Second.
All right, all in favor, Mr. Seah? Ms. McInerney?
Yes.
Ms. Orbital? Mr. Bosette?
Yes.
Mr. Flint?
Yes.
And Ms. Ferguson, yes. So thank you for that. Second set of minutes is for August 25th. Anybody have any questions or find anything?
It looks good to me.
Yeah, I just had a question. I wanted to make sure I understood correctly. On page one. On the second paragraph under M A P C revised redevelopment vision. It says. Requirements instead of in the zoning, or says, um. You know, the board discussed blah, 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 and the timeline of the grant and the public process and the ability to develop zoning bylaw amendments for a. 2021 fall town meeting. Was that one we were talking about if it was a? I didn't know if that had captured it correctly.
Yes, that's what you talked to Chris about, not, definitely not making an April town meeting, but it was a fall town meeting, making that one.
So if it, if it was a fall, okay. All right, otherwise. I didn't have any questions or changes. Anyone else? All right, any proposals?
Can you remind me the date on that?
August 25th.
August 25th. I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of August 25th as drafted.
I second.
Thank you.
And Mr. Seah?
Yes.
Mr. Bosette?
Yes.
Ms. Orbital? Mr. Flint, I think she said yes. Ms. McInerney?
Yes.
And Ms. Ferguson, yes. So minutes are taken care of. Thank you for doing this so speedily. Did Ms. Kaiser come back?
She's back. No sound.
So. Amy.
Which is her cell phone?
So Amy, try, try actually leaving the meeting and coming back in. No, no, no way. No, we, we can't wait to hear what you have to say, Amy. Keep trying. Keep trying. I'll back in.
It's going to be really good. Has anybody else gone to any, well, I guess you should say, are there any liaison updates or? Or town staff updates? Oh, that's good.
I can provide a liaison update on the Community Preservation Committee. We've kicked off our 2021 funding cycle. With sort of a Q and A session for people that might be applicants, which is also when. I mean, the big piece of it is the town coming forward and bringing forward what projects they're looking at for the year. Off the top of my head, just having quickly had gone through, but not actually seen the application packets. I can't think of any off the top of my head that are particularly germane, germane to planning, Elizabeth, maybe if you're aware of something, but. Anyway, that cycle's commencing.
Thank you.
Kristen, could I make a comment?
I think so.
Susan Day, I don't know how to raise my hand.
That's all right. We can't see you, we got your video, so you go ahead. Now, we heard your name. Tell us your address and everything.
28 Concord Green, Unit 6, and I'm the select board liaison.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Wanted to make sure that Alan Coder knew to submit a green card. And that would, when the town manager's office receives that, that triggers our nominating him. So as we did, we received one from Linda, and she's been nominated. But that's the first step, and he can do that online. And the other. Comment I had was that the select board will be discussing at our next meeting and possibly the one after that, if necessary, a date for. Town meeting, taking, you know, trying to use crystal balls to see about COVID and, and the, and the conversation did. Did revolve around end of May, beginning of June, in case we were going to be outside again with the same kind of restrictions. So we'll keep you posted.
Okay, thank you for those updates. See, Amy, are you on the phone now?
I am on the phone. Hello. Sorry, I'm so sorry for the technical difficulties. It's just me, and I spent all day on Zoom. I don't know why I'm having this fail right now. So, so my name is Amy Kaiser. I live at 294 Commonwealth Avenue, and I'm a member of the W C A C. I apologize for my trusty assistant, who is. Joining me to this conversation as well. I'm, I'm here, and part because we had sent along a letter to the planning board. With some concerns that, that we had had about the plans for the Juro Recreation Area. That we had raised on a couple of forums and, and hadn't, were a bit confused by the response, in some cases hadn't received a response. And so wanted to make those concerns known. Our apologies if we sent them to the wrong place, but we, we look to you as our, as our official. Official group who is in charge of us, and we wanted to make you aware of those concerns. I'm not sure if folks had the opportunity to review that letter. I'm happy to try and answer any questions, to summarize some of those concerns. To be as helpful and as expeditious with your time as I can be.
Thank you. I, I'm glad you brought that up. She, that's a letter, I believe it was sent to us on September 11th.
I think that's right, just before town meeting. Yep.
Um. And I guess the question is that, that us on the planning board want to make sure we clarify is. The points that were very well laid out and, and, you know, how does the planning board? Influence those, those things, or what is our role in that letter?
Elizabeth, is there any permits required for that, from the planning board, or that we would?
Yeah, so, no, so the Juro project, since it's a municipal project, does not require. Any permits from the planning board or the Board of Appeals.
So Amy, I read your letter. Thanks for sending that. Is it just a bit that you'd like to see the parking phased because of the extent of the parking that's initially proposed?
Yeah, I think we're concerned about the impact of the parking on the site. We're concerned about, we're concerned about the impact of the parking on the site for a number of reasons. You know, we think phasing it could be a good solution to, you know, test whether we really do need every one of those 47 spaces. You know, given that we, you know, we get by in other, other recreation spaces with far fewer. And a number of other reasons. We appreciate your patience with our lengthy, our lengthy letter. You know, we, we also had some concerns about the density of the, the paths provided, our sense that it was a little redundant. Um, you know, our sense was that based on what we were, you know, sharing from folks, what we were hearing from folks is that. You know, perhaps a lower impact design would be beneficial. I think, you know, and then I think two, you know, two broader processy things that came to our attention, I think. You know, it's clear that town staff has been working really hard on this project for a long time from where we sat, and maybe there was a failure in part, you know, by, by us. But there seemed to be a gap between, you know, when this design was open for comment, when it was considered complete, and then, you know. There was a lot of discussion and community participation, and then there was two years, two-ish years of focused work. And then, you know, we were so delighted when Ryan Kane came and gave us an update in July, and we had some comments, and it seemed as if, you know, oh, it was already. Done, so is there, you know, making sure that there are opportunities, you know, for folks to review the design, review designs, communities to review designs as they're finalized. It was quite different than, you know, than those designs shown in the forum. Another thing that we're just a little bit confused about. Is, you know, some of the, the explanations about the drivers behind the parking and our sense of, you know, the more transparency, the better. You know, on what, you know, if there, if there are parking regulations that the town is using to drive design. Our sense is those should be, you know, readily available as part of our zoning code, as part of the engineering design guidelines, or maybe. Maybe we're misunderstanding the responses we were getting, but we're, you know, there are references to federal parking codes that we're here to, we're not familiar with federal parking codes. That the town is obligated to respond to. So I think just, you know, full transparency about when we're creating public spaces. You know, how we calculate the need for parking and balance the many, you know, the many things that we're looking to our open spaces to accomplish. Those are some of the things that, you know, we, we had concerns about. You know, that emerged as, as part of this.
Thanks for that, Amy. Elizabeth, do you know, is there any more process left in the design there? I mean. I, I'm wondering, I mean, this sounds like it's not within the planning board's purview, but. You know, the West Concord, the great thing about the West Concord Advisory Committee is they're right there. They've obviously been involved in thinking about the Juro parking. The Juro property for a long time, and if we can amplify their voice to raise their concerns to, if there's a continuing process, I don't know, recreation. Committee or with a town, a town manager, assistant town manager, or the like.
So I'm, I have not been actively involved with the development of that project. I did pull together a town staff review meeting. Pre-COVID, so that, you know, over six months ago with the deputy town manager. And it, this project is being handled through the deputy, by the deputy town manager through the town manager's office. So I can't, I can't tell you what, you know, what other steps. You know, that she's intending to, you know, take as far as that community output or input, I should say. But I think it would be well within, you know, for the planning board. To. Take West Concord Advisory Committee's, you know, memo and, or letter to the board and. Add your voice to it and submit that to the select board, the town manager and the deputy town manager.
Yeah, I, I, well, I, it would be my suggestion to the board that we do that. Amy, have you, have you had any dialogue directly with Kate Hodges?
Um, so, um. There was a, there was a public information session a couple months ago, following the W C A C meeting that Ryan Kane attended. I attended, as well as another person from the public who had been a participant in the W C A C meeting. There are maybe two other members of the public in attendance, and a lot of staff members. You know, graciously gave their time to be there to answer questions. There were, you know, we, we re-raised the comments that came up at the W C A C meeting. There were some responses back. I think they led to a number of follow-up questions. I had sent a letter, someone else had sent a letter direct, you know, to Kate Hodges and, and haven't heard a response back. And so then, when the W C A C met again, we collectively, you know, developed a letter and sent that to you. So I'm sorry, that's probably way more on the history than you want. But we're, we're not sure where to go next, but we do think these concerns, you know, are, are important, and we wanted them to at least be on your, you know, your radar.
Yeah, no, does any, does anybody else on the board feel like this is something that planning should be taking up? The planning board should be taking?
I think, yeah, I know, I agree with the approach that you guys just came up with in terms of forwarding the letter, and you said it right. But can we amplify their voice?
Yeah. And then another, another one just may be, I mean, if the app, if the application, the plan has changed really substantially. I'd be curious, and I don't know it off the top of my head, but that part of the park development is being funded by the Community Preservation Committee. And so there would have been part of their application and, you know, the plan to be developed. The CPC is generally in the sort of an oversight role, but they do fund specific projects, and if the project changed substantially from that time. All I frankly remember about the site visit for that funding was their novel composting toilets that they were putting in. I don't remember the layout of the walkways of the parking. So that might be another avenue to go through, but for the planning committee, I, yeah, I think. It would be a good thing to make sure it's getting visibility. I'm surprised you haven't gotten a response from Kate, who seems extraordinarily responsive. But doing that, and so there's a discussion, would be good.
It, it sounds like you, Nina, I mean, it, it sounds like there's a meeting that, you need a meeting. We need a meeting. Because it sounds like there's some questions that are unanswered. That's probably, there might be very good reasons for why it's happening the way it is. So I don't know, I, I don't know if that's something that can be accommodated by town staff, but I don't know if that's something that like. The, that you could be on, Amy, and maybe even someone like from the West, you know, from our board and other key, key folks from town who are interested in this. And I don't know, Elizabeth, that that's something that, that town staff tend to entertain or not. Well, maybe when we send our, our letter, you know, when we forward this letter and add our thoughts, maybe we can request clarification on what additional public input is going to happen in the process. Well, thank you. I appreciate you hanging out on the call and, 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 you know, making sure that we, you know, bring attention to this issue, so.
I so appreciate your time. I wanted to, just for Kate's benefit, I wanted to make two clarifications. One, we made a specific, Tim made a specific inquiry about the, the metrics. And she did, or we made a specific inquiry to Ryan Kane, I should say, and I think Kate may have been involved in the response. And, and got some information back, and that's some of what's footnoted in the letter that we didn't quite understand on the reference. So, so I want to say that we did receive, we were, we did receive total silence from the town. We did receive the response to that specific inquiry. And I do understand she must be crazy busy with town meeting, and I know we're in like a really mean time to be providing public comment, but. But I do appreciate your time and consideration and, and your ability to amplify. You know, the, the concerns would be just tremendously appreciated because it is such a special project in such a special space, and we just, you know, want to make sure, you know, things are, we get the, the community gets the best space it can. So appreciate your time and thoughtfulness on this, and I'm sorry for the technical difficulties again.
Thanks for engaging, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks so much. Take care.
You too.
So Kristen, is it just that the board would like me to, you know, take. Wikex letter and, you know, just formulate it into a memo from the planning board? That you're in agreement with these. Issues and concerns that have been raised and, you know, you would like some additional. Feedback and, you know, answers on them and further clarification on the remaining public process. That may be available to affect change. On the plans.
Yeah, I think so. Just, just that request for, you know, exactly what you said, yes.
Okay.
Elizabeth, do you think you, do you think that you'll get the right amount of communication back by doing that versus? Picking up the phone? Is that your? Some of this feels like there's gaps because it, there's like emails going back and forth versus conversations happening, but, but maybe we're not the right parties to.
My thought is that a letter like that will spur. My thought is that a letter like that will spur Kate to come to, to the planning board and explain what's going on.
Okay. Fair enough.
Or Ryan.
I mean, you could put that an explicit invite and say, we, you know, if you feel like more people would hear you by, you know, coming to a recorded planning board meeting, you know, please, we'll get you on the agenda.
Okay, I will do that.
All right, well, thanks, everybody. I believe that's all the business we have. We will look forward to seeing everybody and hopefully Linda as well on our next meeting, October 6th. And let's adjourn this meeting at 8:10.
Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.
All right, you too. Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Nancy.